We still find ourselves responding both fire and ambulance outside the district boundary. And we don't get that very many calls outside the district boundary, but a couple of examples. Several months ago, we had to go up and confirm an 1144 near the county line. Takes the paramedic to go do that. So our ambulance was gone from the district for three hours while it was up there working its way into where this victim was to confirm the 1144. We had firemen on scene for five hours during the recovery. This was outside the district. Our ambulance was outside the district for three hours. We also had the same situation in the Spyrock area. It was two hours that the ambulance was outside the district confirming an 1144. If the ambulance goes to the upper end of the Spyrock area and transports a patient to Willets, it's three to four hours that the ambulance is out of service, basically, going out to Spyrock, picking up the victim, and bringing it back. We have a second backup ambulance that if the personnel is available, we can staff BLS. But it still is a tremendous workload on the district when we ask people to go to these far-flung places. I have a few numbers here. I just wanted to share real fast with you, just to show you the financial impact. If you look at the top of the page, it's Medicare reimbursements. These numbers at the top are basically the maximum amount that we get reimbursed for a Medicare patient. The Medi-Cal reimbursement is next. Those are basically the maximum reimbursement we'll get if we transport a Medi-Cal patient. The $186 you see to the right is what's proposed in the governor's new budget. If it goes through, if his proposal goes through, the 240 will be reduced to 186. Our typical charges for our transports are, for ALS, $2,000 to $2,400. BLS, $1,200 to $1,600. And we are near the upper end of what the ambulance services in the county charge. But we have a lot of miles. It's not like Ukiah ambulance where you're transporting five miles to the hospital. We're going a long ways. If you look down there, you'll see, and this is for the fiscal year, so we're not completed yet, but you'll see how our runs and our payments break down. Thirty-three percent of our runs are Medicare, 31% are Medi-Cal. And then look over at the payments. Out of the Medi-Cal, only 11% of our reimbursements come from payments we've received for Medi-Cal. The insurance payments, those who are insured, you'll see, are only 8% of our transports. Are people that have insurance. 28% are people that have private pay. They have no insurance. They have no coverage. And you see the private pay, out of the payments that we receive for service, only 7% of our receipts come from private pay. People who can actually pay the bill. Down below that is the actual dollar amounts. You'll see that under insurance, we actually receive more than we billed, and that's just a function of how you receive the payments. So you can see that, you know, we're out of sync because you bill in one fiscal year and get paid in another. But the percentages still fall pretty much along lines. At the very bottom is our operating expenses. Our employee cost for the ambulance, I show there's $132,000. That is only half of the cost of the paramedics. The fire district pays, we do separate books, the fire district pays the other half of the paramedic fees. So the bulk of the employee expenses under the fire district is actually paying the paramedics and the ambulance drivers. Our drivers are volunteers, but we pay them $50 a day to make themselves available for 24 hours to drive the ambulance. They're volunteers, but they get $50 a day to do it. So you see, for the fiscal year, if you look above, our receipts so far have been $90,000, just in the money that we allocate to the ambulance as their expenses, not including the share that the fire district pays. The ambulance has expenses of $169,000. It doesn't compute. We need to replace our ambulance. Ten years old, over 100,000 miles. $135,000 to replace an ambulance. We need to replace our defibrillator. $15,000 for a defibrillator. These are the kind of expenses that we're facing. I just want to end up by saying, this is not what scares me. The numbers are not what scares me. What scares me is who's coming next. I look at our paramedics. I look at our paramedics and our EMTs, and they're getting burned out. You get up at 2:00 in the morning, three or four nights in a row, and you're a volunteer. You're going, why am I doing this? I don't see, our community's changed. When we did our first ambulance, we had a sawmill, we had loggers, we had ranchers. They all participated. Either they're employees, or they contributed. Our community has changed. It's not the same people. We can't go to the community and get the kind of support we had before. We've got two types of volunteers. We've got old guys like me who are on their way out, and we've got young kids who are trying to get experience so they can go to work for Cal Fire or somebody else. There's nobody to come in and take our place. When our system fails, it's going to fail because we have nobody to staff the ambulance. We'll make the money work. We'll steal from the fire district to keep the ambulance going. But when the whistle goes off and nobody shows up to staff the ambulance, that's when the system fails. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. Next, we have Dr. Lawato. Dr. Lawato is an emergency room physician at Ukiah Valley Medical Center, as well as the medical director for Coastal Valleys EMS.
Hi. Thanks, Jim. That was, I think most of what I wanted to say has already been said. I just appreciate, first of all, Carmel and Stacy and Brian actually recommending this study, because initially, I really was a strong advocate of the stipend and giving, you know, Leightonville Fire and some of the really needy services some support. But I really think that this study has kind of made us face more clearly some of the realities that the whole EMS system faces in Mendocino. I don't want to make light of this, but I think that there's an old industry saying, and Jim pointed out very poignantly, that it's an industry joke that the way to make a million dollars in the ambulance EMS business is start out with $2 million. And I think that's unfortunately true. I do want to point out a little bit, maybe reemphasize, what I think was also in the study, and that Mike Regone just referred to a short while ago, is that some of the strengths that we have. And we have an incredible cadre of volunteers that I know Jim relies on, I know they do out in CompuFire. We just talked about it just before the meeting. I mean, that is a huge part of our strength as an EMS system. We have first responder and all levels of services that back each other up. Sometimes it's huge cost to each other, and they do it just because they know it makes the system work. And finally, we actually have medics who work in our community at a fraction of what they can make, just 40 or 50 miles south of here. So, I mean, I don't expect that to change. I know that Jim is concerned. You know, maybe some of us old guys are going to fade out pretty soon, but I still think we can still expect that kind of community-minded spirit as we move forward. But it's hard to come here and ask for money. In a sense, that's what we're doing, maybe in a creative way, but I don't think we're going to be able to sustain, and certainly we'd like to even advance our system without some new financial resources. And I think primarily, those resources have to go to the providers, absolutely. And I think that can make a huge difference. Even small inputs can make a huge difference. But to a much lesser degree, it has to also come to the agency, and I'm a part of that agency. I think to get the kind of planning and oversight that you're going to need to have a high-level system, or certainly a higher-level system, we're going to need those resources from an agency point of view. And I'm really not talking about like a cash-laden Range Rover-type system and agency. Mike Regone used to work for one of those in Alameda County. I mean, they just have a lot of money from tax base, from very wealthy people that are insured, that can pay the ambulance bills. I'm really talking about like a system that's really intrinsically Mendocino-like. I mean, it's going to be filled with volunteers, people supporting each other. But I think we have to augment it with some really cohesive planning and some, just a few innovative programs. Just, you mentioned the EMT-1 Enhanced. I mean, that could, having a couple really well-placed EMT Enhanced programs could make a huge difference in the backup and in unnecessary, unpaid-for, dangerous helicopter flights. You know, I think our residents kind of feel they already have that, and I think they do deserve it, and so do our visitors. So hopefully, we can get creative in finding a way to funding this in the system that we want. I mean, as a director, I mean, I took to heart a lot of the shortfalls that you pointed out in our system, and I think myself and our agency, we want to meet them head-on, and I think with a little bit of resource allocation towards that, I think we can. I think we can make a difference. Thank you.
So to provide a possible funding mechanism to sustain or even improve our EMS system, I'd like to speak to a couple items now. The funding that presently is provided to Coastal Valleys EMS by Mendocino County provides for only the dispatch of ambulances and a slight amount for oversight of the system. Very, very vital you understand that. It does not provide for funding for the health and sustainability of the present provider system. So again, any one of those dominos fall, sooner or later, the remainder of the dominos are going to fall also. This system is below the average expectancy of our county citizens. We have a lot of folks that have moved in here for various reasons, come from very urbanized areas, and one thing I can guarantee you, that when they pick up that phone and call 911, they understand that because of where they live, their house will be consumed by the time the fire department shows up. But when they pick up that phone and say their grandchild is choking, and by God, you better get out here and help me, they expect that service. And under Title 22 of the state of California, we're obligated to provide it. So this funding also does not provide for the availability of localized training for the system and their providers, which many of them are volunteers, and they travel great distances on their own time just to maintain their current training levels, let alone travel to try and upgrade to, say, paramedic or EMT Enhanced, to provide those extra small life-saving abilities. These areas, Covelo, Anderson Valley, Piercey, Leggett, there's no funding for that. They do that out of the goodness of their heart. And remember, I mentioned, this system exists on partnerships. So without those volunteers being partners in either a fire department or on an ambulance provider system, the system's going to collapse. And you need to understand, I'm not paid here by this consultant. I'm here because, like Jim Little, my passion is for the citizens of these counties, and we're failing them under this present system. Even if these providers or responders travel out of the area, say, with some funding mechanism to pay for their gasoline, you're also taking those responders out of their area, leaving that area understaffed. Covelo has, I believe, eight people to staff their ambulance. It's a BLS ambulance, basic life support. And I believe their average age is over 55 years old. So when you hear Jim talk about responder burnout, folks of my age or some of your age, two or three calls in a week is going to burn you out in a real rapid rate. So when you only have eight responders to begin with, you're really teetering on collapse. There's an example. I also need to mention the seriousness of this situation and the impacts it has on the county tourism and our continuing declining economy. And I may mention also that the most impacted citizens by this EMS system that is here presently, simply by the odds of being involved in an auto accident, by how much they drive today and the distances they drive today, are you five? Mr. Pinches, you drive from Bell Springs. Drive from Potter Valley. The chairwoman drives from Fort Bragg every day. Mr. Hamburg drives to the South Coast. Mr. Hamburg, heaven help you if you run into a crash or be involved in a crash on Mountain View Road. Even Supervisor McCowen, who I sat in that seat and has the smallest geographical supervisor district in the county, and/or the staff, you're banking on the odds, you're gambling against the odds every time you travel to a distant border supervisor meeting location. You wind up in an accident halfway between Ukiah and Boonville. You get an ambulance out of Boonville? You get one, maybe two ambulances out of Ukiah? But if your accident involves, say, a school bus, a system goes into play that's called triage. Certain people get left on the side of the road, no matter what their injuries are, because the most serious injured gets transported first. And with one, maybe three ambulances, up to six total patients get transported immediately. You throw in another one with your ambulance, you get seven, maybe eight. People get left alongside the road. That's the system we have today. Remember, if those dominos fall, that system starts to collapse. So we're here to talk about the report, and the report identifies CSA III as a possible way to provide for sustainable funding of just the system we have today. We, as providers of the EMS system, support this recommendation 100%, as do the county's three hospitals with representatives out here today, the ambulance providers who are here today, and the county fire chiefs who voted last week unanimously to support this report, to cry out for how serious the situation is, and to plead for your understanding of the seriousness, and to support the possible placing of a vote issue on the ballot in November to allow the citizens to choose the level of service that they would like to have. Now, why did we pick out a funding mechanism for you? Because you have a great many obligations ordered by the state. The sheriff and the jail, public health, indigent care, public guardianship, public administrator, and also EMS. So we're trying to help you come up with a solution. And just to say that you unanimously approve placing this on the ballot, I'm not, I'm not, in any shape, way, or form, saying that this is going to be an easy yes on the ballot. This will be one of education of the public to know the system that they have before them, but to allow them to choose and to assist you to allow your obligation to the state of California. So if I've gone too long, I apologize, but this, I just want to educate you of the seriousness of this situation. And we'll remain for any questions you have. You know, the public, hopefully, those people that are watching now know a little bit more of the situation that they have, the system that they have. And that's all we're trying to do today, is present you this report, which you commissioned. It's now come to final presentation. It's been almost two years in production, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. I want to wrap this up for us. I think we did go a little over our half hour. I recognize that EMS is a very complex issue. I recognize it's very late at night. We've all had a long day. We did lose a couple of our representatives. I noticed some of the representatives from the hospitals had to leave, but we have several left in the audience, and they'll be happy to answer questions and probably will provide public testimony as well. Clearly, what we're telling you, because we're all very concerned, clearly, is that our EMS system is not sustainable. It's not going to be able to function the way it needs to function if we continue the way we are. As Jim's explained, this is not a new issue. This is a continuation of a conversation that started to occur back in 2006. I'm going to correct Jim just a little bit on the general fund support that goes into EMS. General fund does support the dispatch system for EMS, and it supports maintenance of repeaters. That is all the general fund at this point is supporting. And I don't mean to say that as all, because those are vital functions of EMS, and we appreciate that general fund support, and it's very important support. It does not support the administration at all of the system. We're here today, first and foremost, just to give you the information. I think that you've gotten a lot of information. We're here, secondly, to, again, ask for support to put this initiative on the ballot. I do want to be clear, however, before we wrap this up, that this is one step. We provided you with one step that we think that can be taken today. Getting this on the ballot is a step we can think, that we think we can take today. It's not the only step. It will not solve all of the problems for EMS. It will not sustain the system. There will be additional steps that will need to be taken. Some of them, some examples of some of the steps we could take are to increase the ambulance per-call fees, or to initiate a Mendocino County-wide JPA, or an exclusive operating area. Those are conversations we'll be having with you again. This conversation won't end today, just like it didn't start today. But we wanted to provide you with something today to do something today to sustain the system. So with that, again, I want to thank all of the representatives that did stay for this, and your time again, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to board questions, and then we'll go to public comments. Supervisor Brown?
I think Supervisor Pinches was first. Okay. I need to ask, have you seen a letter from the Mendocino County Farm Bureau and Employers' Council? And if you have, I don't know if you're prepared to answer everyone. The Farm Bureau's letter is quite lengthy, but I would, I've read it over. I'd very much like to have their questions answered, or at least a discussion on them. And Employers' Council also had a letter. And then I wanted to ask, who is Rick Keller? Okay, because I went over some old documents I had, and it shows he represents Vera Health. Who's that?
You'll need to come to the microphone to answer the questions, please.
Sorry? It's an ambulance provider, and we know, we don't currently represent them. We represented them in the past.
Okay.
So that was, that was full disclosure. When we bid on the project, we, full disclosure, said we represented an ambulance company over in Sonoma.
Okay, because I'm being told this began in 2006, this study?
The study did not begin in 2006. The conversation began in 2006. We commissioned the report, I think it was in 2009. I would have to get the exact date. But it was in 2009 that we commissioned. We went out, we entered into a contract with Fitch at that time, not 2006.
And you used to represent another ambulance company. I'm just trying to figure this out.
Yeah, we represent counties, government, private companies, fire departments, all over the country. So this is just, when we do that, if there would, you know, potentially be any conflict, which, I don't remember exactly when, you might remember because we were there, it was in Sonoma County, we represented Vera Health for a hearing about ALS interfacility transports. Four years ago? Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Cryer, there is a district for ambulance on the South Coast?
Correct.
And my, there's a parcel fee to property owners, and as a part of the tax base, it's $132 for residential that they pay and $356 for commercial. Are you familiar with any of that?
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm wondering what you're considering for a CSA III? Because that's pretty pricey, in my opinion.
I think, I think Mr. Regone can speak to that. While he's coming up to the podium, I would like to say that we did receive, because one of your questions was, did we receive the Farm Bureau's letter? We got it today at 2:30. We did, we were able to have a brief conversation while we were waiting and looked at some of the questions. We can go through them one by one and answer them. We could provide you with some written answers, whatever this board's direction is, but we did have an opportunity to look. There are multiple questions that we could address.
I think, I think that ambulance district is a good example. They, prior to passing their district, quite frankly, they were unable to muster many resources. In fact, often, Elk, which is a basic life support transport provider, Elk Fire, would have to do most of the transports over in that area. Since they passed their district and now are operating it, they have full duplicate and redundant ALS coverage for their entire system, which is right over the line in Sonoma. So I can't get, I can't get to the particulars of how they came up with the pricing schedule or anything like that, but, but that's why they did it, is they were literally, they were falling apart. They weren't able to get out the door. When I met with the director there, he, they were struggling. They were almost unable to respond.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pinches?
Thank you, ma'am, sure. Some of these questions I'm going to ask, because there's a lot of members of the public that are watching, is some of them, these parcel, this parcel tax that's proposed is a parcel tax of some, has there been a fee set, or what this parcel tax will be, and will be, will be, will it be the same throughout the county? Now, and it, it does not carry areas that already have a parcel tax, right?
Yeah, it could. What you have is, the board has the ability to impose, you know, a tax countywide. We also have the ability to impose a special tax within the county service area number three. We also have the ability to create zones of benefit within the CSA III.
Would you define what service area three is? That's the area that's not?
It's county service area is all the unincorporated areas of the county. If you recall, there's a map in my office. I've been working quite a bit on this, and it, within county service area three, you have all of the fire districts in there as well.
Yes, but there's areas of that that's covered under existing parcel taxes now.
There are areas of county service area three. Particularly the fire, the fire districts that are already, already have parcel taxes associated.
And they have different amounts that are approved by the voters.
That's correct.
So will this that's proposed to be put on the ballot, will the same figure be used for every parcel throughout the county, or will be, they be, that's a yes?
You have the ability under the law to, to tax improved property, property different than unimproved. You can make that distinction. And I've asked the assessor, who's also been working closely with us on this, to kind of give me an idea, an estimate of the number of parcels. And what you have in the CSA III, for unimproved parcels, you have 25,940 parcels. Improved parcels, you have 24,967. So, you know, what I suggest here is, given the lateness of the hour, is that you allow a small working group to be formed very quickly today, that could consist of staff along with folks from the fire districts, to sit down and really come up with an actual proposal that we can bring back to you. Because really, we need to really be looking at whether, number one, whether we want to create zones of benefit, whether you want to tax over, you know, tax the fire districts, again, with a parcel tax. You may not want to do that. What are the number of parcels in those various zones of benefit versus the number of parcels in the entire CSA III? So there are a lot of variations here that can go on. Within the CSA III, if you do zones of benefit, you could just do a benefit assessment, go through the benefit assessment process, which is not a special tax. But if you do a special tax, it's a two-thirds vote, and it has to be specific. You have to be very clear as to what the money's going to be spent on, so.
Well, I'm not worried about the late hour. We ask these volunteers to go out 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning all the time, so us staying past 6:00 is a no-brainer for us, but what is the timeline? I assume that we want to get it on the June or November ballot?
If you're going to go for the November ballot, you have to, we have to have something ready to go, I think, by the first week of August.
Oh, then we do have a little time.
No, you don't have, I mean, it's, there's a lot of work that needs to be done very quickly, which we're willing to do, if you want to do that.
So to get into the question of how much money would be regenerated, that's really up in the air at this point. But what I want, what I'd like to get answered is, how will this be distributed? Because you're going outside, let's take Leightonville Fire District as an example. It's got certain boundaries. So you know what's collected in the boundaries, but it's outside the boundaries. So how do you know what would be, say, Leightonville's portion or Little Lake Fire's portion? Where would the, how would this money be administered, and how would be, would be distributed, and who would monitor the funding?
I'm going to let Mr. Wattenberger answer that question, but I do want to just point out what Janine's saying is, our board agenda summary does request that you direct staff to go back and put together a proposal. We're not saying that we have all of the answers for all of the details for how the parcel tax will look. Our request was to accept the information and send us back to put some information together for you, so we don't have all the answers, and we
So we don't have all the answers and we have, need to work with county council and some other partners to come up back with all the details.
Well, that's sufficient for me now and I'll cut. I just want to read something, this, the Employers' Council, and I completely agree with this statement. It says, "The adoption of a parcel tax is generally a one-size-fits-all approach and not proportional to the services required. Emergency service response services to the traveling public who will not pay the parcel tax is a prime example of how parcel taxes for such services are not proportionally to property owners." I completely agree with that statement, but the bottom line is, who's going to pay? Somebody's got to pay. And we have to, I think we have an obligation, as you said, that Supervisor said down south someplace, this is an extremely important issue. I don't, I, as a property owner, you know, when, when I call 911 or if I had to call at my ranch, the response would be, you're out, you're out of service area. That's, that's what happens in my area, but I'm not.
Not if your phone works.
Anybody lives as far out as I do, I'd be out of their mind. But anyways, I think it's sufficient to come back with the details because, you know, before I, and I support this, some reasonable funding source, because we can't keep depending on volunteers. I see it affecting people in my district. It's, it's crazy what we're asking them to do. But, and you're going to have a better chance of success at the ballot box if people really understand what you're putting on there. So if we could come back in the near future with some, something definite to answer these specific questions, I think, to move this along, I think that's.
Supervisor, Supervisor, I tremendously appreciate your understanding of the gravity of the situation and you hit it right on top, the nail on the top of it. It, it's unbelievable to respond to your ranch, but each and every one of you are in that same situation. We're not here to present a solution with each parcel is going to be $125. We, we came to present a report that shows the system is failing and will not sustain itself. Then the work actually begins. The boot's on the ground. We'll get you the facts that you need and bring it back to you to present in a very, in a form that you will understand and the voters will understand and they will have a clear choice.
Supervisor McCowan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, with all due respect, I think the report today has told us what we already know. I really don't think this is a surprise to anybody sitting up here. You know, anyone who's followed the board actions on this issue over the last several years knows that it's a critical need, that the board has at different times made commitments to address, we've never yet addressed it. And I think it is overdue, but it's easy to identify the, the problem and the, the solution and exactly how that's going to work is a little more difficult. And that's complicated by the fact that the different fire protection districts and the different, different ambulance providers are all in different circumstances. Some of them actually have decent funding. Some of them are just operating on a shoestring. And, and some of them truly are at the breaking point. So, you know, how do we find an equitable mechanism to come up with the funding that puts the funding to the places where it's most needed? And, and whatever that is also garners sufficient public support that it passes. So I don't think we yet know, is this going to be a countywide tax? Is it going to be zones of benefit? It's apparently the, the stakeholders have decided the parcel tax is the most workable approach, but, you know, there's still a lot of blanks that need to be filled in, including how much is it going to be and all of that. So I think that council has made the appropriate recommendation and that's for us to authorize the work to continue so that you all can work out these details and bring us back a recommendation. So I'm going to try putting a motion out there and see if it gets a second or not.
Thank you.
I move, we accept the report and authorize staff to work with the Fire Chiefs Association and other stakeholders to identify and bring back funding options to support the rural fire districts and the emergency medical system.
Second, I'd like to make a comment. Jim, you talked about going back to Leightonville. I can go back a little further than that. When I was a kid in Leightonville, the ambulance service was if you got hurt, you called Smiley Harmer with his Cadillac station wagon, they threw you in the back and he, he raced like hell to the Willis Hospital. So you've come a long way.
That was it.
So Supervisor Brown, did you have another comment?
Yes, I do, and I, I hope that the one size doesn't fit all. I think that's the comment. I hope you take that seriously when you go back because we do have the different providers. I think Supervisor McCowan was absolutely correct. So maybe a zone of benefit is more what you're looking at. I just, I don't know. When I found out about South Coast, we have a private provider in an area. I know all the ambulances, whether you're a volunteer force or not, back one another up. But I, I really feel that we must be careful, you know? What's this, and, you know, this is another request for a special tax.
Right, and, and one, one thought that I had in terms of looking at this is, however we do it, we will end up funding the CSA, which is basically, we, we have a, you know, a line item for the CSA, but no money in it. And once we start, if we do adopt the parcel tax and it gets, you know, approved by the voters, the CSA gets funded and then we contract back with the various providers, various districts, to cover those areas that, that aren't being met. And so then that, that, that addresses that variance between the different providers and districts. That's one thought, you know, that we could look at.
I'd like to ask council, the way the motion was stated, does that, do you think, it didn't mention first responders in terms of the emergency system, but it talked about it generally, so it seems like that probably works?
Yeah, I, I thought the motion was fine.
Okay. A few comments.
One, one other thing before you, I just got confirmation from Sue Ranacek that August 12th is the deadline.
So I, I think that that really does not give us much time because this will require more than one agenda for the board to consider in terms of placing it on the ballot, isn't that correct? It will require two readings. And I fully support this approach. I know Supervisor Wattenberger will remember, I was first seated on the board 2005. This has been an issue ever since I have been on the board and it has been a very fragmented one. We've done a lot of Band-Aid approaches. We heard in great detail from Colin Wilson of Anderson Valley before LAFCO, Supervisor Wattenberger was seated there as well as myself, about we have got to do something. We, our service area is three times as large as our, as our, as our real service area and, and the volunteer efforts and, and the concerns about litigation on that, the, the lack of planning that this county has had. And this, this issue goes back decades. This should have been dealt with decades ago in a land use circumstance, in that we have so many parcels that are not taxed for basic fire protection and in, as it turns out, for the first responders as well, that there's really no equity in the situation. And I've dealt with it over the years in, with respect to Westport, with respect to Liggett, with respect to Piercey, trying to help Piercey, these are all volunteers, being stymied in terms of how do they get reimbursements for accidents from, from, from accidents on a federal highway system, Highway 101, and not being able to have the kind of connection with CHP that they needed. So there are all these impediments to us collecting even the basic dollars that we really need to. And I think the overview here is that there may be an umbrella situation that going down this pathway with respect to a parcel tax will allow economies of scale to start developing and will allow some general oversight with respect to hopefully the collections on things where we can be reimbursed in a better fashion than we have been. And our volunteer districts really, I think, need that kind of support. So I think this is so critical and I took it upon myself when we were putting on Band-Aids at LAFCO with respect to the specifics on, in Anderson Valley, bringing it to the board here, having a full presentation, bringing in the, the fire chief from, from Sonoma County, having a detailed discussion here, getting ready and poised to take action and then having it really just go once again to the back burner. And so I really want to make sure that doesn't happen again here. I think it's incumbent upon this board to find a solution and it may not be a perfect one. It may not be that, given the constraints of the, of the circumstances under California state law, that the ideal scenario that we might want to build may not be possible under state law. So we're going to have to think about compromises, but we're going to have to do everything we can to make sure that we take adequate steps to have a situation that, that we can have confidence in. And I'm just very concerned that it once again fall through the cracks. And as the chair, I've taken it upon myself to meet with the, the first responder groups and, and the fire groups because of my concern emanating out of my involvement on the board for the years I have been in there and how it's really affected the outlying areas of my district. And wanting to feel that the traveling public is safe and I think as, as comments that have been made here before, today, there are indications that we feel less confident in that as we would like to. So I really want to see every possible scenario and I know council has been very involved, working with the assessor, trying to come up with the overlay maps. What can we do that honors the system that we have in place, as inequitable as it is? Because in reality, to reform all the districts and go back out on separate initiatives would be the most fail-safe way to do this. And that is not feasible and it's not going to work. We can't have 15 ballot measures going forward. So we're going to have to compromise, I think, in how we go forward, but we need to come up with something with respect to taxation that, that honors the complexities of the county and the taxpayers to date, trying to address to the best of our ability those that are falling through the cracks, which is unfair. And how do we move forward in the most equitable fashion, given the set of circumstances we're dealt? So.
Madam Chair, I appreciate your understanding of the situation and your doggedness of trying to bring this to a, to a conclusion. An earlier supervisor, I'm sorry, my advanced age, I'm forgetting which one stated it, but CSA III would be everything outside of these checkered areas. In addition, it would exclude the national forests, the state forests, TPZs, and along those lines, it might be possible to satisfy Supervisor Brown's concern of the South Coast ambulance of carving that area out because they already have a tax. So lots of options are out there in front of us. I, I truly thank you for, for the seriousness, your understanding of the seriousness, and, and I would ask for a unanimous vote from this board.
Supervisor Hamburg?
Yes, very, very quickly, you'll definitely get my vote. And I just want to thank all the fire chiefs out there and all the people that are holding this system together with Band-Aids and Elmer's glue. And I know your director quite well. I think he walks on water. There's very little that, that he could ask me for that I would not do everything in my power to, to help with. So I'm, I'm hugely supportive of this. My biggest worry, and it's, it's sort of summed up in this, this correspondence we got from the Farm Bureau, is that we don't, before we get started on this, which is a very tight timeline, that we don't get a lot of opposition already ginned up. Oh, they're going to tax us again and, you know, and the, the objection made by the Employers' Council. So, you know, I, I think, I think we have to move really quickly and you guys know that the November ballot may already, you know, we're going to have the library tax on. It's possible that the state is going to have a tax on. How many tax increases are people going to be willing to vote for in November? So, you know, we can have the great, a great idea and a fair idea and really bet this thing out and, you know, the thing will be getting 60, you know, getting two-thirds plus one. So my concerns are not so much about substance as they are about politics.
And I, I just want to comment that I think Supervisor Pinches is correct, that we need to do a really good job with education and understanding and making people really understand what this is about. And I want to respond just quickly to Supervisor Brown that we do respect the diversity of the different geographical areas and I think the representation of the fire chiefs from every varied district is a good example of that and their unanimous vote. And we do understand that the one-size-fits-all approach is not going to work and we're going to be, need to be creative. And I want to thank county council and the assessor's office for helping us in this type timeline because we're going to need to put some work really quick to it. So I just want to say thanks.
Supervisor Pinches?
I say this half jokingly, but who's going to pay for this if the ballot measure fails?
You don't really want to ask.
I said that for the benefit of Supervisor Brown.
Madam Chair. Supervisor Pinches, you still have two years on the board.
Okay, with that.
For the record, nobody's stepping up to the plate.
It's all about you, Johnny.
I was going to ask for volunteers.
How about a vote?
Okay, so is everyone clear on the motion?
Yes.
I think so. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Oh, public comment. You are so right. We need to visit that.
We do appreciate your eagerness, but.
We just, Pat, we, we just voted, but I, you, you had so many from the public coming forward that I forgot that aspect. But let's go to public comment because we certainly should have that. Any other members of the public wishing to comment? Please fill out a form, bring it forward to the clerk.
My name is Leonard Winter.
Leonard.
I'm CEO of Ukiah Ambulance Service. I fully agree that we need to have the special assessment if possible. Let's give me, I'll give you an example real quick. Last year we did, we rendezvous, which we met with Covelo Ambulances 32 times on 162 for the lack of advanced life support, which is a paramedic service. In Anderson Valley, we met with Anderson Valley doing the same thing 20 times. The city of Ukiah, we backed up in 2010. The numbers are hard to find, but it looks like we, at least 70 times, we backed up the city of Ukiah. The, the problem that we have is when we back up Covelo, Anderson Valley and the city, we come up short. We have two ambulances 24 hours a day in, in Ukiah, but when they get busy backing up everybody else, we come up short. And then we do Willets Ambulance, so we have to back up Willets when they go out of the area, we send an ambulance up there, which leaves us with one ambulance. Many times during the day and night, I hear the city's busy and then we have to send an ambulance out to back them up. We may be up in Willets. So I'm pacing the floor because there is no ambulance. And the next closest ambulance would be either Leightonville or Cloverdale, depending on where we're at. Unfortunately, I heard some news today that the paramedic program at the college is going to be discontinued, or at least for the next few semesters. I think that what we really need to do is get some training out to the outer areas, especially to Covelo, Boomville, with the advanced procedures, which would free up our ambulances to be where they belong, in the Ukiah and Willets, Willets area. You know, I could talk about this all day. When, when I started working on ambulances with my father, they were run from the funeral homes. Wallala had the ambulance in the funeral home, Fort Bragg had the ambulance in the funeral home, and Ukiah had it in the funeral home. My dad eventually took it out of the funeral home and put it where it belonged in an ambulance service, where we eventually ended up ground ambulance and then we were the first, actually air rescue ambulance in Mendocino County also that we brought into the area. So I know exactly what's going on. We, we did many calls that were unnecessary, but there was no other way to get them anywhere. So we had to do that call. A lot of them we didn't get reimbursed on, but we still did it. It's a difficult situation. Back in 19, I'm not sure the exact date, when we first went, we all got a subsidy from Mendocino County for many years. There was a $20,000 to $30,000 subsidy coming to every ambulance company and we got paid for dry runs at approximately 15, 50. If we went on a dry run, which means we went out, patient didn't go, we would get a $50 fee from the county would pay us that. In the late 80s, I'm not sure the date, all the subsidies stopped, so some of the ambulance companies went away. So we went up to Willets. We'd said we'd give them a year, we'd try it for a year. It didn't make it. We lost not a lot of money, but a little bit. It wasn't. It wasn't, wasn't adding up. So Mr. Jeff Smith at the fire chief up there was a very good man. He decided we're going to put it to the vote, and he tried for the special assessment. And he worked hard at that. He worked at that for a year. He spent all the time he could. And you know what? That thing failed miserably. It was horrible when they got through with us. It wasn't even close. And my concern is, I'm, I don't know that that would happen again, but I know with the ambulances sitting up there and the other ambulances in different areas, people get the feeling, they don't need to vote for it because we're going to be there anyway. And that's a concern I have again. I think what we really need to do is get some training to the outer areas and get those people to the advanced level that would cut us loose a little bit more and get, get it out there a little closer to everybody. I think we need at least to attempt to see if this thing can get through. I would hope that it would for the outlining areas. And Supervisor Brown, I have property in the Manchester area. I know exactly what that tax is, and you're right on with those taxes. I pay those taxes. I pay the fire district taxes. I pay the Santa Rosa College taxes in Walala area. It never stops. There must be five of them on in that area.
Do you have any surcharge that, that you're charged or that you pay as a result of every one of your runs to the county or elsewhere?
Well, we pay, we pay a transport fee for every 911 call that we get. We send a fee of, I think it's $250 is it, or $3 per call? And then we pay the dispatch fees of $3,000 a month. We send to have the dispatch up at Howard Forest, which does a great job. I had one other thing.
Do the volunteer departments also pay those same fees?
The per-call fee goes towards a portion of the dispatch, which is subsidized by County General Fund.
We're actually starting to back up Fort Bragg now out of Willetts for their transfers out of the area. They've had, I'm kind of speaking for Fort Bragg here, but they've had, they have old ambulances that are falling apart, unable to go out of the area. So just in the last four to five months, we are now starting to do transports out of there for them also, which are like either from Fort Bragg to Willetts, Fort Bragg to Ukiah, Santa Rosa, and to San Francisco, which leaves us short again. I thought I had one more thing here. Let me look real quick. I think that will do it. If, if anyone needs anything, I, like I said, I've been doing this, I grew up in this business when my father first came here in 48, and then had to go back to the service, and then we came back in the mid 50s. So I hope that we get something through. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Winter, thank you. And I think those were excellent concluding comments for the discussion and what we need to face going forward. Oh, we have one more. Mr. Bradford.
I'm representing myself, my family, and the Mendocino County Cattlemen's Association. And additionally, after Devon left, she asked me to represent the Farm Bureau as well. And first, like some have said already, thank, I'd like to thank on behalf of myself and my family, the volunteers who have been the backbone of this service throughout the county. They have, you know, not only helped, helped those in need, but those who depended upon this for their very, you know, life. But I do have, I do have some concerns, and those are ones that specifically state to what this will cost landowners and property owners in the county. My family and myself have been strong supporters of a lot of the emergency service providers in the county, as well as health centers and hospitals in the, in the area and CalStar. And I'm kind of, we're not alone in that fact. I know there are a lot of other individuals, organizations, et cetera, have done that. And I'm wondering if you add a parcel tax on, is this going to be diminishing what you might be receiving from that? And in my case in Anderson Valley, I pay a CSD fee for every residence and as well as numerous other taxes which I've agreed to. I'm kind of concerned that as a large landowner for not only myself, but also fellow cattlemen throughout the county, that this is going to be something that could be a potential breaker when it comes to can I sustain my business and can I keep, you know, operating at a profitable level? This year, we're fortunate in that prices are high for livestock, but also other costs are high as well, and fuel costs, et cetera, labor, and we see it throughout the system. So I would caution and urge concern into how this parcel tax is arrived at and how it's going to impact those who are going to be benefiting from it. I strongly support the idea of supporting the volunteer services. It's something that needs to be done, but at, you know, we have, you have to balance the support with the cost that it, it will provide. And I am concerned also, as was stated by the Employers Council letter, that there are those that will be passing through that will not be paying into the system, but will be providing or receiving the benefits of it. So just those concerns. I thank you Supervisor Brown for bringing the Farm Bureau letter to the attention of the board, and thank the others for commenting on it as well. I think the, their concerns need to be answered, and the Cattlemen's Association is right in line with the Farm Bureau on those concerns. But thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So we'll make sure that the clerk recorded a unanimous vote for that, since it was right time we were having public comment. Supervisor Brown?
It's not on this subject, but I do have a comment that I'd like to make on another earlier.
Okay, and then we will be adjourning to a brief closed session? Yeah?
Well, we're going to have to take an off-agenda closed session item as well, and I want to make sure that gets on the record.
Oh, okay. So we'll go to you. So Supervisor Brown.
Thank you. I, after the courthouse presentation, I feel that this board of supervisors needs to have more information on our staff, where they might go, because I think they were talking about, what, 2014?
2016 for completion.
So, you know, we are looking at facilities and everything else. I just feel I need more information about who owns the courthouse, who is housed in the courthouse, who owns the land, the same with the library, because we just can't be doing this at the last minute. So I would like information sometime in the near future, just as we go forward, so we can start discussing it and be prepared no matter what happens.
Yes. Madam Chair, if I could just ask a question on this. Since we have some budget presentations coming up, is this something that could wait until July? I'm just asking timing wise if that's okay with this board.
I think so. Supervisor Brown thinks so?
Okay. Great. That'll give us a little time. Thank you very much.
But I think that's a very good comment because we are talking about, in a different reference than we just had, another kind of domino effect with respect to, not a tight timeframe, but library location, housing of other related criminal justice functions, courthouse being a state function. We really need to be able to have an overview and a comprehensive discussion about that, I think. So, okay, July, then that makes sense. Okay, any other board comments? Okay, we will.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, yes, counsel, that's right.
We were served yesterday with a Purb action filed by SEIU, and, and I think it's appropriate to discuss it under litigation, so I'm requesting that we take it as an off-agenda item for closed session purposes.
So do you need a motion to that effect?
Yes.
Okay, board?
So moved. Second.
Okay, a motion by Supervisor Hamburg, a second by Supervisor McCowen, to take this as an off-agenda item as delineated by counsel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. So we may adjourn to closed session for the discussion. Is that accurate, counsel?
Yes.
Okay, so we will do that.[1713.42]